Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 26, 2024 Town of Victor Planning Board Meeting. Start the meeting in our usual fashion with a pledge of allegiance. Some announcements before we get going, please. The emergency exits are on both sides of your room. The restrooms are out the door and to your left. If you would, please be sure to sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room, even if you're a developer and presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you. They have the email address and phone number for the planning department. Also on the back table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. If you would, please silence or turn off your cell phones. And finally, take all conversations out into the hallway, if you would, please. We have minutes? Alright, so Alexis, would you like to give us an update from the town board?
Hi, good evening, everyone. We had our town board meeting on Monday. I forget, we switched planning to Wednesday, so not yesterday. We heard a presentation from the Victor Farmington Library. The vote will be on tomorrow from 12 to 8:00 PM at the Village Hall. They presented on the new budget that they've proposed as well. I think it was actually at two meetings ago when I came to give an update to the planning board. Spoke a little bit about how early voting would be happening here in the town hall. However, no Victor voters would be eligible to vote. And I think it was when everybody here looked at me like I had 12 heads. It was when I started to kind of start looking into it more. Because I was using the line that the Board of Elections gave us for why they were putting the early voting site in here in Victor. And, you know, I work for New York State in my day job, so I feel like I know sometimes the laws are a little bit antiquated or passed a little too quickly and they don't think everything through. But it's been a couple of years since we've had early voting. You know, I had a feeling maybe they did kind of rectify our situation. Because the board had told us, well, you're the largest town in the municipality. You have to have an early voting site there regardless of if, you know, your voters are eligible or not. And when I looked into it further, it's actually not true. If you are the largest municipality in the county and you don't have any voters that are eligible to vote in a primary or a special election, then they can have the early voting site in the largest municipality that is in the district within the county to have that early voting site. So that would be presumably the town of Farmington for Ontario County. I know it caused a lot of confusion over the past nine days of early voting to have the early voting site here in town hall. I think there were signs all over the town yesterday. And it definitely frustrated and confused a lot of people. And, you know, it was a little upsetting to see kind of we're using taxpayer money to pay election inspectors in a place where we weren't getting a lot of foot traffic, a lot of people to come vote here. Out of the 233 early votes that were cast, only 32 of them were cast here in the town hall. So last night, the town, or Monday, we passed a resolution requesting to the Board of Elections that should the situation happen again, they do not have an early voting site here in the town hall. Other than that, oh, the, as I think I said before, but we're finally at it. This Saturday is the Dog Park Grand Opening, 10 to noon. And if you'd like to see me and my Jack Russell patch, we will be there with bells on to, you know, cut the ribbon and get it going. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keith?
Keith Manard, project manager for the Town of Victor. Your next meeting is Tuesday, July 9th at 7:00 PM. Two things on the agenda, both public hearings, Lake Combs. 7321 State Route 251. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a 20,000 square foot building with associated utilities, drainage, and 28 new parking spaces on a 9.7 acre parcel. The second thing is East Few Mall Charging Stations, 11220 East Few Mall Drive. This, the applicant is requesting approval for a site plan modification to the approved plan from August 23rd, 2022. That was to use 20 parking spaces for 10 dual-port EV charging stations. The modification proposed will use 40 parking spaces to install the 10 dual parking stations, plus any carryovers from tonight. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda tonight then is Lehigh Crossing, Lot Number 9. This is a public hearing, but if we have anybody that wants to come up and recap for us, please.
Good evening. Kurt Surtel from Blue Stone Creek Development. As we talked about two weeks ago, we had this up and we were tabled for county comments, so no... I didn't see, I checked for comments from the county today and I didn't see any.
We've got the comments.
Okay. All right. I asked Tom Fromberger from MRB, but he didn't have them. I know since we, since I was last here two weeks ago, there was a letter from the fire marshal agreeing to the one fire private hydrant on-site rather than the four he had requested, so that issue is resolved. And then I'm assuming that there was nothing from the county that's earth-shattering.
It's all good. Does anybody from the board have any further questions? Nope.
No, I think those were the outstanding items. What were the county comments?
Oh, let me...
Tom didn't have them in his email? I can send them to him again.
Yeah, I emailed him maybe about 10 o'clock this morning and he said he didn't have them. And I didn't hear from him as of 5:00 or so.
Okay.
SWPP was not provided for the site to allow for adequate storm capacity, storm water capacity to review, concrete. Is this all relevant or no?
It's just the SWP that they were asking for and I think Keith is fine with all that.
Yeah. Well, as far as I know, in the fire hydrant issue now, the approval from the fire marshal, you are consistent with the rest of the buildings on-site? Al, you're good?
Yes.
And you as well?
Yes.
Okay. And the public hearing is still open, so is there anybody from the public that has comments, questions? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Al moves.
Okay.
Second.
Ernie.
Ernie from Ernie. All in favor?
Aye.
4-0. So we have a resolution prepared. Lehigh Crossing, Lot 9, 7901 Lehigh Crossing, 62624, Application Number 10 SP 2024. Whereas the planning board made the following findings of fact. Do I need to read all these?
Nope, you don't have to.
They're all standard. Now therefore it be resolved that the application of Blue Stone Creek Development LLC, 1890 South Winton Road, Rochester, New York. Site plan entitled Lehigh Crossing, Lot 9, drawn by MRB Group dated April 4th, 2019. Received by the Planning Board Secretary May 6th, 2024 and last revised May 21st, 2019. Planning Board Application Number 10 SP 24 be approved with the following conditions. And they are all standard as well, are they?
Yep, you just might want to read the...
Okay, the ongoing conditions then. That the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Second, that at the request of the Planning and Building Department, a pre-construction meeting shall be held prior to the start of construction. Third, that a highway permit be obtained to establish both driveways. Fourth, that a letter of credit be posted prior to scheduling. Five? Okay, five, that a building permit be obtained before the start of construction. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Al?
Second.
Second by Ernie. All in favor?
Aye.
4-0 in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will take care of all those conditions.
Awesome.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda is U-Haul Self-Storage Site Plan and Lot Line Adjustment, 14 SP 2024 and 5 SU 2024. This is at 840-8045 State Route 96. The owner is Arc One LLC. Applicant is requesting approval to combine two tax parcels to facilitate the placement of prefabricated metal storage buildings totaling 13,600 square feet on the existing paved parking area. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Abruzzo from Marathon Engineering. Joined today by Eric Schoff from our office and Tom Palomero from U-Haul. So the site is at 8045 Route 96. It's in the commercial district and the Route 96 overlay district. The plan is to put in the southern tip there 13,600 square feet of self-storage surrounded by, well, not surrounded, but gated off with a black vinyl fence and a keypad entry. Currently, right now, there's just storage for their U-Haul trucks and that they don't really need. The, yeah, these units here, I do want to take a second to just explain what they are. So they don't have any foundation to them, which when we went to the ZVA, that was kind of a, tough to explain. They just drop them on the, right on the pavement that's already existing. Throw some hurricane clips on them to the ground to tie them down and ta-da, you have storage. So they're all prefab, bring them in on a truck, drop them off, boom, done. Part of this, we did receive comments from the fire marshal and town codes. I resent an RTC. It should have been delivered this morning to you guys. I highly doubt you guys had time to review that, but in case you did. Their main comments from the fire marshal was to add a hydrant, which we have. And then he also wanted two more hydrants on-site, which we added right in front of Building 3 and just to the right of the driveway, which we have added in there. And the main hydrant we put to the, I guess that would be southeast corner, just outside the pavement that's existing. And hot box right on the property line. Yeah, so I'll turn it over to you guys for any questions.
Al, would you like to, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Ernie?
Are they going to be red as in those photographs?
Like in orange, yeah, matched like the U-Haul, orange and white. Brett, Tom?
Yes.
Any printing on them?
Not up in...
Just have the unit kind of...
If you would, just for a second, introduce your name on the microphone there for the tape.
Yep, Tom Palomero from U-Haul Company of New York. So there wouldn't be any writing on them or anything, just basically the unit number on the door. And then there's a little U-Haul logo that goes above it. So it'll look pretty much just like what you see in the pictures there.
I assume they're going to be locked?
I'm sorry?
They're going to be locked?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yep. Customers have their own lock that they put on them, so, just like a regular outdoor storage unit.
That's all I have, Joe.
Scott? So really, your site work is just consisting of the water main that you're putting in there, is that correct? And then these drop on existing pavement and you're not doing any grading associated with that? It's just relatively flat surface? Do these units have a bottom to them then? Do they have like a floor? So it's above the pavement elevation on which you're placing it, so drainage goes around the structure?
Yes, yep. There's steel beams underneath and then it's like a plywood floor reinforced.
So your impervious area doesn't change then, right?
I don't know.
And did you get a zoning variance? Were you successful in getting the zoning variance for this?
No, we, they wanted us to bring back a number for, we're going for the sprinkler variance for it. They wanted us to bring back a number of how much it would cost to actually put sprinklers in this, which we just provided them till the next meeting. We anticipate they're going to let us have it, but until it happens.
Well, that determination is pending, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And, okay. And the county, according to this information, the county suggested that the planning board consider requesting a vegetative buffer, additional screening of the facility from the road. What is the visibility of these buildings that are going in versus what we see right now?
You'll be able to see them from the road, which is something I really want to see what your guys' thoughts and feelings are. We're going to have a six-foot fence in front to kind of block them as much as we can. The town code is a bit vague on what they want, or what you guys want for a fence. So right now, we have just black vinyl fencing to kind of block it. And we can do the slotted things if that's what you guys prefer. Or really, we're acceptable to anything you guys want.
Is a berm with vegetation on it a possibility? Does this need to be fenced in or are you choosing a fence for security or...
Are you talking like a berm up against the roadway with vegetation?
In between, I guess wherever the, I don't have a way to see this from a visibility standpoint until I guess I drive out there. But from the road, looking at the trailers, I believe that's what the comment is speaking about. Vegetative buffer, additional screening of the facility from the road.
I did not see that specific comment in the ones sent over. But, I mean, it's something I can definitely bring up with U-Haul proper and see what they want to do. But we also do not want to limit visibility of the building because that's where all the signage is for it, that's the existing. We'd want to maintain the existing.
It's part of the U-Haul facility, right? So you have signage for U-Haul at the present. And then this is like an addition to what U-Haul does, I presume, besides rent trucks and such?
Yeah, yeah. They also have self-storage, just kind of in addition to what they do on the site.
So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'd be interested in knowing what options there are for that particular item. I think it'd be nice if we could...
Especially if you indicated that code is a little confusing about what's required. We might look for a comment from code to clear it up?
And/or we have, only have a landscape architect with whom we consult, maybe get his input on it.
Sure.
And let's see. I guess that, I guess that the whole landscaping thing is kind of the visual issue that emerges when I look at this. But I think the project makes sense. It'd be nice if we had an amenity like that that went along with your project to make the corridor a little more nice than when it was without these units.
Understandable? Al? Yeah, go ahead.
Kate Powers, Labella Associates. Before I go through my comments, I guess I'll just sort of add to the conversation. But I think one option may be providing a vegetative buffer between the right-of-way and the parking and have it be a height that potentially obscures the headlights and the cars, but is not so tall that it might obscure any sort of signage. So, but obviously, I defer to the landscape architect on that. Additionally, for the fencing, I would defer to the CEO for the town, but it does appear to be a side yard fence if we're considering the main building as the primary structure. But obviously, I would defer to the CEO for that. And then in terms of Labella's comments, first is that this appears to be an unlisted action. Doesn't appear to be a type 1 or a type 2, so the applicant has submitted EAF accordingly. And the board will have to make a determination. And then additionally, we would like to see some additional items on the site plan. So for your existing conditions, I believe there's currently perimeter parking on-site, yes. It doesn't, the demo, or the demo plan C1, I don't see that front yard, or that front parking depicted. So just to include that on there. And then for your proposed, so drawing number C-2. Any signage, if you're putting a monument sign or some other sort of signage that's not on the building? We'd like to see where it's located. ADA parking spaces, where you're planning on storing vehicles, as well as where you're planning on putting snow storage, which you may have... I didn't get a chance to look at your response letter, so you may have already addressed that. The other item is lighting, and so that's on drawing number C-4. In the key, it states that there's going to be 45 proposed sconces, wall packs. So we would like to see where those are all located. So having them actually depicted on the site plan and then to adjust the foot candles accordingly.
I can highlight them so they're a little more visible. They are on there, but I'll, they're really small.
Or even if you just, in the key, there's not a symbol for it. So if they're already on there, if you just indicate this is what the symbol is, then at least there's that connection. Our fourth comment is for fire protection. And it's essentially just reiterating the fire marshal's comments, but I believe that in the applicant response letter dated June 24th, that they are amenable to including the requested hydrants. And then sort of our last comment is a catch-all, but suggesting that all applicable variances be obtained prior to final signature, as well as any additional requirements that they may need to meet for DOT, MCWA, Department of Health, et cetera.
Thanks, Kate. And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that has any questions or comments, observations? Okay. In my mind, we have enough open items here that I think we need to get some answers before we move forward with any sort of resolution. And you kept notes, Lisa, that we, things that we need to have addressed. What timeline would you anticipate for this, for next time potentially or...
Well, they will be on July 17th for zoning board, so they would not be able to come back until July 23rd. But it's up to them. If you'd like to come the next meeting, we can definitely put you on if you want to answer more questions, but you will not be able to have a resolution until the zoning board.
Let's go after the zoning board things. I expect that we'll have that passed, so they'll get that checked off and then...
So we can put you on July 23rd.
Very good. Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Real quick, do you guys have any fencing, just suggestions? Are you guys okay with the, the black vinyl coated, just chain link? Or you guys need, want anything else?
Is fencing necessary? Do you need to fence it in or...
We want to keep, just security there, just to keep people out of there that don't need to be there. You know, off-hours kind of deal. Now, they'll have, people who have rented will have access through a keypad system, but...
So I think the issue then is more the landscape buffer.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think black vinyl on like chain link fencing isn't the most attractive thing from a visual perspective. If you feel that's something that you need to use for security purposes, if you could buffer it then with some landscaping, so it's not visible to the passing public. You know, 96 and 251 have been part of a corridor study that's been on the books since 1992. So anything you can do to help keep the corridor nice with respect to landscaping, I think would be good. And if you need the fencing for security, that's certainly understandable.
Okay, perfect.
I think it kind of defaults to, if you have a landscape architect who works with you folks and he could speak with our landscape architect and discuss that issue and come up with something that both think are a reasonable solution, I think the board would be receptive to that.
Okay. We have much fun covering bases. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the Tough Shed Site Plan, 15 SP 2024 and 06 SU 2024. Properties located at 7447 State Route 96. It's zoned commercial slash light industrial. The owner's BLW Properties of Victor LLC and it's 20.7 acres. Applicants requesting approval for the proposed Tough Shed tenant to display units in the existing parking area, install material racking systems on the east and south faces of the building and a new refuse enclosure. Good evening.
Good evening. Alex Ammering, Costage Engineering Office is at 217 Lake Ave, Rochester, New York. With me is Chad Button, Regional VP from Tough Shed. Obviously, we were here two weeks ago, got a subdivision approval. The application for Tough Shed would be Lot 2 of the subdivision, 20, 20-plus or minus acres. Again, Mr. Wilkins, BLW Properties will retain that. He will lease it to Tough Shed. So the application before you obviously is twofold, site plan and then the special use permit. What triggers the special use permit is open display and production assembly in the commercial light industrial district. So the application materials obviously were submitted for both those items. There was a letter from Tough Shed directly going through the special use permit criteria items. The site plan itself is relatively simple. This site actually suits Tough Shed's needs pretty well. Obviously, a couple of things going on. They do production that will occupy the existing building. There will be some renovations interior to the building that will all go through the Victor Building Department, obviously. In the exterior to the building, there's really only a few things as noted on the application. Some material racking, which is all behind the building. And then also some refuse or garbage enclosures also behind the building. The display units, there's a number of different sizes. They're all in the front area. It will all occupy existing parking areas that were previously used for RV display. We've kind of depicted that. Obviously, the arrangement of the display units is somewhat subject to change. They're obviously selling them, producing more. But we did kind of depict the limits of what we would anticipate. We submitted some photos also of other facilities. They do like to kind of dress up the areas around the display units. It, you know, obviously creates a better customer experience, helps with obviously selling sheds. So that, while it isn't detailed on the drawings, you know, that would be coming down the road. We didn't show it on the drawings because honestly, as the sheds change and the units get potentially moved, you know, so would any of the walkways or landscaping. One thing that did come up in the comments, we wouldn't be altering the lighting, would be staying the same. They obviously have plenty of room to hopefully grow out there if this all moves forward, so. There is an access. We won't be changing anything about that. All the utilities will remain. There was a comment about confirming sprinkler and fire flows. We'll be happy to do that. But generally, the occupancy for motor vehicle repairs would be, you know, have a higher demand than a wood... be, you know, have a higher demand than a wood production facility, so we're comfortable with that. The application did go to the county. The comments were relatively minor. If you'd like to discuss those, we can. We did get a couple of comments from the Fire Marshal. He did want some additional driveway width around the back of the building. I talked with Chad before the meeting, and they have flexibility in moving the racking and the dumpster enclosure, so we can also make sure the Fire Marshal's comments are We also received Labella comments. Happy to go through those, but none of them were anything that, again, we didn't feel comfortable working with them on. And lastly, I don't think I saw the code enforcement comments either, and I apologize. I don't know if it's an IT issue on our end.
The code comments and the Fire Marshal comments both got sent together on June 13th, so if you didn't get the Fire Marshal, you probably didn't get the code, because they were together.
Gotcha. Thank you for getting the fire comments over today.
I have Adams right here, if you wanted to read them.
Parking, you know, we have more than enough pavement out there. We can come up with plenty of parking. One thing I didn't notice, note previously, you know, there's a lot of overhead doors along the front of the building. They'll only be using...
A few of the overhead doors?
Yeah, three, really. For deliveries, so any of the, you know, front of the building can really be used for parking, too. So we'll look at the comments on that, noise, lighting hours, operation signage. Happy to talk about any of those, but I think that was more, you know, if the board, you know, had particular input on any of those items. This obviously did go to code enforcement right off the bat. That's kind of how we got the code interpretation on the special use permit, so.
You want to talk a little about Tough Shed, as long as you're here?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Chad Butson. I'm the Northeast Regional Vice President for Tough Shed. Tough Shed was founded, it'll be 43 years ago, in Rexburg, Idaho, by Tom Suri. There's now 58 of these locations across the country. It is 35% employee-owned. It's an ESOP. He's giving the company back to the employees. And I actually, I worked for a competitor for 17 of the years that I've been in the shed business, and came to work for Tough Shed in 2018. They purchased us. It was a bittersweet moment, but we like to say we're all shed people, and Tough Shed really takes care of their people, so it was great to join that team. This is the ninth factory I've opened in the Northeast since I took over. And it's also just a spot that Tom shares 55% of the profit back with the employees. Every single employee in the building has a bonus opportunity and a profit sharing opportunity. So the guy is super generous. It's a great place to work, and we're really excited for what we can do for the local, you know, employees and staff, and we're excited to be here, so. Any questions for me?
I've got a number, actually. Are the sheds entirely constructed onsite? Are they pre-built, just put together?
So we, it's called a flat stack, so basically, everything's pre-cut. Floors, the roofing material, the walls are pre-built, and it's stacked. It's then put on a truck, and it's brought to, picked up by a local installer, and then installed in the backyard. The display units are obviously fully built. We rotate those every 30 to 38 months, and those will be then, where applicable for DOT purposes, taken down and reconstructed and/or delivered on a truck with a wide load permit, for example. Again, that's only every three years.
So we're not looking at heavy traffic in and out? That's good to know. One of the other discussions that came up, and I want to make sure we're clear, there was discussion about a joint access agreement for cars not having to enter one site, come back out, turn around, and go into Tough Shed if we resolved that?
The easement is currently being reviewed by the buyer's legal counsel for Lot 1, because obviously, that real estate transaction is contingent on the subdivision. The subdivision just happened, so there's a whole kind of sequential process going on. We don't anticipate an issue with the easement.
It'll be beneficial to both parties if...
It makes sense. I mean, from a public safety standpoint on 96, I think it would be great, so.
Good, thank you. When I was looking at the plans, I was querying the dumpster sheds, the dumpster locations, particularly the one that's actually on the back of the building. I was very curious how the dumpster folks would access that. I'm picturing the machines to come in face-first or forward and lift them up and over. It didn't appear that there was enough space for that to occur.
You're talking about the one that abuts the back of the building?
Correct.
Yeah, there's actually a fairly substantial gravel area.
It's about 40 feet to the back of that parking lot.
We can do turning movements, and it looks like we might be changing that a little anyways to get...
Because of the Fire Department comments? Okay, and that'll be reflected on whatever final plans we see?
Yep.
Very good. Ernie, do you have any questions?
I do. You said there's going to be some construction going on, putting these sheds together?
Yeah, so effectively, we are internally using just wooden chop saws, a standard chop saw, and nail guns, and that's really the extent of it. We have a press as well, because we build our own trusses.
Would this be inside the building?
Inside the building.
Not outside?
Inside, all inside.
There's a medical facility right back of you. Concerned about the noise.
Yeah, no, it's all inside that building.
That's all ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Scott?
I think the cross-access easement is a good thing as well, and I think that the way you show it here, I mean, it would infer that that's exactly what's going to happen, right? Because your site plan, at least the one I'm looking at, shows that Lot 1 and Lot 2 connected to one another in two locations, from what I can see.
Yeah, again, we've drafted up the easement. It's just then from a legal counsel. It would only include the front creek crossing. Intent isn't to allow people to go to the rear and connect through. It would only be if someone, you know, made the mistake of turning into the wrong curb cut. So it would essentially encompass driveway, you know, up to the parking, across the drainage, and then up to...
What about the one, what about the one further to the south?
Sorry? The owners, at this point, don't want cross-access along the rear creek crossing.
So what does that mean on my drawing here, where I see the two parcels connected? That that's going to be revised, or is that connection still going to be there? I see on the drawing I've been provided with, I see two connections from Lot 1 to Lot 2.
It's an existing connection. It's out there today. And quite honestly, being a regulated wetland, we prefer not to touch any of that drainage.
So that will exist, but it may not have an easement on it? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't want to speculate, but I would imagine at some point, a site plan would come forward for Lot 1 if the sale goes through, and that, at that point, it might be removed, but...
The display units are set at a setback, according to your drawing, of 54 feet, and I'm wondering how 54 feet came about?
We somewhat picked that because that's currently, well, let me back up. We're maintaining all the existing site light poles, so we came up with this arrangement around the existing light pole locations.
I see.
And the light poles are roughly 54 feet back from the right-of-way.
Has code reviewed this to any extent regarding our front setback? I mean, is this subject to our front setback requirements for...
I believe he mentioned it in his comments. I don't have him in front of me now. Ethan, do you see that? I believe he did look into that. Oh, you can keep them, that's okay.
This is kind of, this is kind of a different one, because these are structures, but they're temporary structures, right?
Foundation, they could be picked up and moved.
Right.
Did he call it out, or no?
No.
No? Okay.
We're, you know, obviously aware that, you know, the existing parking lot is very close to the right-of-way, so we were trying to use some judgment, obviously. Like any other business, visibility does come into play, but...
I guess that just kind of jumped out at me. I don't, I looked at, I look here at the county comments, they're talking about the stream that we talked about, wetlands, which we know about. They ask whether any of the gravel can be removed and replaced with grass. Any comment on that?
It could be. We aren't proposing that, no. You know, obviously, the hope is their business grows, and maybe they potentially need more of the area, you know, to rip something out and put it back in, and, you know, potentially change the drainage patterns.
So, and there's gravel parking then, within, generally within that 54-foot setback that will enable the public to see these items displayed. And yeah, I guess if you turn that in the lawn, that would kind of impede that ability. I guess I don't have any more comments.
Thank you. Al?
Most of my questions were already answered, but just one, what are the intended hours of operation?
Typically, it's from 7:00 to 5:30, Monday through Friday, and then 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday. Eventually, we may have Sunday, but we don't have currently Sunday hours.
And would that include both the manufacturing and the show?
Correct. There is, so let me back up. The manufacturing will be till 5:30. The sales office will be open till 6:00.
Thank you.
Yes, we didn't really talk about the building much. There is a small showroom, there's offices, and then production. Obviously, production takes up most of the building, but again, it works pretty similar to kind of how Wilkins operated before, so.
We use their showroom, we're just going to clean it up.
Thanks, Al. Kate?
I have one more, Joe.
Sure.
I'm counting 17 display units. Is that the number that's going to be there?
Yes, I mean, eventually, plus, yeah, I mean, obviously, we want to, that is kind of a scenario that we just drew up as an example. I think at any given time, depending on how many come and go, we could work with a maximum, but that's just what we prefer to do right there, is that number.
Okay. Thanks, Ernie. Okay, Kate?
Kate Powers, Labella Associates. Some of my comments have already been addressed, but I'll just quickly go through. So regarding seeker, the proposed activity appears to be classified as a type 2, which includes the seeker process. We also wanted to draw attention to the access of the rear of the building, obviously for sanitation trucks, but also for any sort of trucks that may have to access those racking systems. And then on top of, obviously, the Fire Marshal's comments regarding access for emergency vehicles. So ultimately, we'll defer to the town Fire Marshal. It sounds like the applicant is currently working with them. We just want to ensure that access is satisfactory to the town. Additionally, I believe there's currently a hydrant along the right-of-way, just to include that. If it's not already, I don't believe I saw it on there, if you intend to add any new signage to provide the placement and orientation on the site plan. And then lastly, we did point out that the example photos included additional landscaping and pedestrian lights, those small-scale ones. And the applicant addressed that as well, of saying that that's not depicted on the site plan, but will likely be in addition in the future. And that, that's it from us.
Yes, sir. Certainly.
Keith Maynard, project manager, texting with Adam. He said it is 80-foot setback. I guess there was a variance for Wilkins, but it was specific to the RVs, so just wanted to clarify.
Thanks for that information.
So having said that...
We would be okay with the condition that, you know, a plan, you know, for sign-off would meet the 80-foot setback requirement, with boards in a position to move forward, so.
We need to mark that on a resolution at all, or...
It'll just have to be shown on your final site plan.
Okay.
Was it in the code letter, or was...
It's even on the plans. I just, I don't know if it was a confusion, because the difference between the shed and a, but if you look at building setbacks, 80-foot.
Yeah, okay.
I don't...
Standard?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. It works for me. I think that's appropriate. Sure. Very good. And this is a public hearing. Any comments? Sure.
Hi, Dave Nankin from 1174 Charleston. I'm not clear, does Wilkins building itself go along with this? I, see, I was, I thought when they split the two pieces of property, the one is for the Tough Sheds, and the other one would be to be determined.
Correct, and as you face the property, we're talking about the piece on the left-hand side, not including the big Wilkins building that's on the right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem. I need a motion then to close the public hearing?
I'll move it.
And second?
Second.
Ernie? All in favor? Aye. Aye. I then have a resolution prepared. So Tough Shed Site Plan 7447 State Route 96, application number 15 SB 2024 and 6 SU 2024, today's date. Whereas the Planning Board made the following findings of fact, and there are 13 of them. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Tough Sheds Inc. Site Plan entitled Tough Shed Site Plan, drawn by Costage Engineering, dated May 23rd, 2024, received by the Planning Board, May 28th, 2024. Planning Board Application Number 15 SB 2024 and 6 SU 2024 be approved with the following Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. And they're all standard?
Yeah.
And they're all standard? And then I'm going to add two to that, though. Number six, that cross-access agreement be executed between Lot 1 and Lot 2 prior to final signature. And number seven, that all applicable variances be obtained prior to final signature. Ongoing conditions, first, that the site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. That a move-in permit be obtained by the planning, or from the Planning and Building Department. And third, that a sign permit be obtained for any signage. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Motion to approve?
A move?
I'll move.
Al?
Second.
Ernie seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved four-zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you need that, Mike?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. And let me see. The fourth item on the agenda is Tambi Electric Parking Expansion thirteen SB twenty twenty-four. This is located at six fourteen Fisher's Run, Zoned Light Industrial. The owner is Michael Tambi. Applicant is requesting approval to construct the addition of twenty parking spaces east of the existing parking lot that's located on the south side of the building.
Good evening. Link Sweetrock with BME Associates. We were actually here in two thousand sixteen for the last parking expansion. So, but this is a continuation of sort of the last expansion we did. We're proposing the twenty parking spots along the south side of that building and to the east a little bit. The, it's around the existing access drive that's already there, and there's already some parking in the back that's there for them to enter the building. It's all for the employees in the offices. The entire, I do have the previously planned with me that does sort of show the rest of the site, because I know there was, there was a few questions about showing the rest of the site. But basically, to the north is where the trucks are, where all the equipment is, where all the, where all the people come, where all the workers come that are out in the field. And there's a separate access down to the north where they go. And we're not changing or proposing anything there. This is really just twenty parking spots for the employees that are working in the office as part of just their needs for their growing business. I've proposed, the grade goes up from the edge of this pavement up towards the property to the south. So I'm raising the proper, I'm basically raising the grade and installing a DuraSlot drain, which is a, it'll be a pretty flat drain, but it'll be pitched on the bottom. And then I've sized a dry well over to the side, which is similar to what we had done before. I just upsized the dry well. Calculations based on the new pavement, new impervious. It's point-two acres of disturbance. We're under the criteria of the Ironicoid watershed as well as DEC anything requirements for SWIP. We have been to, I went to county planning. I've received comments from Code and Fire, and I got LaBella's comments. I provided written responses back to the town on all of those. I don't know if you've had a chance to see them all. They're all sort of hot off the press. But there's nothing there that we didn't feel comfortable answering and trying to address any comments we received. So with that, there was one code comment about keeping the parking off the property line, the buffer, which I reviewed and looked at. And I feel comfortable, we'll just keep the twenty-foot access drive that was approved. I was giving them a little bit more of an access drive, but we'll keep the access drive that was approved and just shift the parking up and keep that buffer. The other one is the dry well size was, actually, when I submitted it originally, the dry well was wrong. And then I submitted another plan with updated dry well area on it, which might not have made its way to you. But it's correct on the most recent updated plan. So with that, there was some comments as well about landscaping and lighting from the county. And I sort of put in my responses that, you know, we're here to talk about that tonight. If, you know, the board has some questions or comments on landscaping or lighting. Right now, they're just planning on leaving the lighting that they have on the existing building and using it to light this area like it sort of lights it today, so.
Okay. So stormwater engineering is kind of an arcane science for me. I don't get it. So I have one note that says, please ensure that no additional stormwater discharge will be directed to the swale north of the property. And then I have another comment that says it's a good stormwater plan. So we're good to go there. I don't understand this.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the drainage pattern that's there is being maintained. I can't, I can't bring it uphill. But I'm trying to detain it, so I'm not increasing what's going there today. That's the best way I can say it.
That works for me. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, it makes sense to us. And Mary Steblina had commented about the size of it. And like Link said, he adjusted that already, so.
Great, because drainage in this area typically is a great deal.
Correct, which is why Will commented what he commented, in general.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're good.
Thank you. The company did ask if there's adequate turnaround space for emergency vehicles. Was that addressed in your response?
Well, it's what's sort of there today. I mean, I, we can look at it some more, but adequate, I mean, emergency vehicle's more provided in the front than it's going to be in this back area. We can get, you can get a vehicle turned around back there, but you're not bringing a, you know, fire truck into that back area. But the front is designed to, and the other side as well. So there is adequate turnaround area in that site.
Very good. We'll change it up a little. Al, do you have any comments?
No, no other questions.
Okay. How about you, Ernie?
I think there are about twenty-five spaces?
Twenty. Twenty spaces. One on the top there, there's my pointer.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
There's one there. I think there's five there, and there's fourteen there to make twenty.
Twenty-two. I counted twenty-two. Am I missing something?
Fourteen, five, and one. Some of those are there.
They're already, I see. I remember when you came before, a few years ago.
Yeah, we added, we added, last time we were here, we added those ones and these ones. And now we're adding around, we're adding one here, some at the end, and then we're going to just basically extend this out.
Okay. Got it. So go ahead, Joe. Thanks, Ernie. Now Scott?
I guess I just had a couple of questions on drainage. Where is, where is the trench drain going? Is it along the edge of the asphalt?
Yeah, I'm going to have to move it up to the edge of that parking. So it's going to be like right on the end of the parking stalls. And then I'm bringing it over to the dry well here.
Okay. But that's not presently shown on the drawing, right?
It is. It's just hard to see because of that thick line.
Okay.
It's called out and it's, the length is there and it is, it's following, it's just sort of following the edge of pavement today.
Okay, yeah, I guess if I try hard enough, I can see it.
I should have probably separated it a little bit more from the, I was trying to show the disturbance, and then it's sort of right along the edge of the existing.
And so I presume the soil's sandy and there's a low water table?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, it's, we've never had any issues with that dry well we put in last time. I don't think there's ever been any.
Lighting stays the same, right?
Yeah, there's just some, going to be some building-mounted lighting. There's a back door here and, you know, some lighting along the building that's there.
But no pole lighting or anything like that?
Okay. I don't have any more comments or questions. Kate, you're up.
Kate Powers, LaBella Associates. We did receive the response letter from the applicant. We were able to go through. We don't have any issues. I will just, I'll quickly go through these just for your all's knowledge. So first, for Seeker, it appears to be an unlisted action. For existing parking, we would like to see all of the existing parking be depicted on the site plan, just because this will be the approved site plan for this site. And when somebody's pulling it out, you'd like it to have, you know, the entirety of the site. And the applicant is amenable to that. Instead, in terms of stormwater management, the project doesn't require coverage under the general permit, and it also doesn't appear to exceed the threshold for the Ironicoid Creek watershed design standards. As has been mentioned, a slot drain as well as the replacement of the existing dry well is part of the stormwater management for this site. And when we were additionally, when we were looking at the dry well in terms of sizing, the previous plan that we were looking at was smaller than what was in the calculations. It appears that in potentially a iteration of that, it was fixed, but the applicant is amenable to that as well. So we don't have any outstanding issues.
Okay. Very good. Thanks so much. And this is a public hearing as well. Any comments? So any other further comments from the board?
No.
So I'll have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
And second, with Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Four-zero. Very good. Then I have a resolution prepared. This is the Tambi Electric Parking Expansion at six fourteen Fisher's Run, today's date thirteen SB twenty twenty-four. Whereas the planning board made the following findings of fact, and there are thirteen of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project, Tambi Electric Parking Expansion, will not have a significant impact on the environment and that the negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be resolved that the application of Tambi Electric Incorporated site plan entitled Tambi Electric Parking Expansion, drawn by BME Associates, dated five twenty twenty-four, received by the planning board May twentieth, twenty-four, planning board application number thirteen-dash-SP twenty twenty-four, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. That no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid per the fee reimbursement local law adopted on eleven twenty-five ninety-six. Second, that the comments in a letter dated June twenty-sixth, twenty-four from LaBella Associates be addressed. Third, that comments from stormwater manager dated June tenth, twenty-four be addressed. And fourth, that comments from the code officer dated May thirty-first, twenty-four be addressed. Ongoing conditions, one, that the site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section Four. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. A motion to approve?
I'll move.
That's Ernie's second?
Second.
Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four-zero. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. We'll see you at the next one for lightcoms.
Two weeks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments?
No.
I just wanted to note that I've been taking advantage of, I get mailings a couple times a month from the New York Planning Federation on the Learn at Lunch. And they're probably the least painful ways of getting your training hours.
You've been doing those.
Good, good.
You went today.
I just, I just finished my last one as well. And some of the stuff is actually pretty interesting. So I would recommend it. Again, it's totally painless.
Learn at lunch, okay?
Absolutely.
And then you get a credit hour for that?
Absolutely. And then I'll get, you actually, they will give you instructions where to email your request for certificate. They very often will send you the, either the PowerPoint or the PDF materials from their presentation. And you just send them off to Lisa. She logs them in, gives you a pat on the back and...
Good job.
Yeah.
That's good.
So having said that...
I appreciate knowing that. Because you're right. I mean, like, November starts creeping around and all of a sudden, you realize that you don't have enough credit hours, then you're looking at the...
Trying to find four hours.
Final weeks and, and it's, it's an unpleasant feeling.
Absolutely. If I may then have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Kate.
So I believe Joe Logan will be back.